Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, any additions or corrections at this time?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Chad to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried implications from Hunter's Ridge Community Church. Good evening.
Well, good evening to all of you. It's good to see you. Thank you for allowing me to open the meeting with prayer. Appreciate that greatly. So let's, let's bow together in prayer. Father God, thank you for this privilege that we can call upon your name. I want to begin by just simply saying thank you for the city of Hutchinson. What a beautiful place to live, even in the cold and the snow. A wonderful place to live and we're grateful, God, for that. I want to pray for the council members here tonight. I thank you for them, God. I thank you for the wisdom and the insight that you give to them and the willingness to deal with hard issues and to make decisions. And we pray that it is for the welfare of, of this city. And so we ask that you would help them in that decision-making process tonight and, and in whatever matters they have, they're dealing with tonight. Give them wisdom, inform them, Father, in, in only a way that you can. So thank you for them, God. I pray for the mayor's rest and his hand and the healing there for him as well. We give you thanks, God, for, for your goodness to us and your bounty and your blessing. You've brought us through the Christmas and the New Years and we, we begin again. So we're grateful, God, that we can call upon you. We call upon you at any time. You're present with us always. We give you thanks for that. And so I pray this now and for the meeting in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Already we do have a couple of resolutions. Resolution 14994, resolution accepting cash donations of $25 from Thomas Kennedy for the law enforcement memorial park fund. Do we do these?
As I remember, you can do them both together if you'd like.
And B is Resolution 14995, resolution accepting cash donation of $2,000 from the Village Ranch Incorporated for the Hutchinson Fire Department. And proclamation, we'll probably just do that by itself. And motion to accept the two resolutions.
So move.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to accept the two donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Okay, we have proclamation as one book, one community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes connecting citizens to individuals in the common purpose is a powerful means of building a stronger community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes strong communities create a stable and supportive society. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes citizens of all ages who feel a sense of belonging tend to lead happier and healthier lives. Whereas the city of Hutchinson recognizes that one book, one community, choice of Alan Eskins. Is that right?
That's right.
Life we bury expands a sense of community through a wide range raging discussion. Now therefore, I Gary, who is here, Mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as One Book, One Community Month. Mary, you want to talk about this at all?
Just a couple of minutes. Thank you for helping us get the word.
Mary, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mary Hankey, lifelong Hutchinson resident. I'm the retired librarian for about 30 some years. I've been retired now for about, since 2013. So I'm still at promoting books and reading, just in a different, less formal way. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for promoting and making this proclamation. I think this has turned out to be a really good way of connecting our community in a different way. This is the sixth year that we've had this one book, one community book read. It started out through Heart of Hutchinson with a committee that I was on, Connect Wholeheartedly. And the idea that the proclamation spelled out is that people that are connected feel more of a sense of belonging to their community. It leads to healthier lives, lifestyles when they feel that connection. There's not the loneliness. There's a sense of belonging and people that feel like that in a community and are active in the community are going to lead to a healthier community, a community that feels connected. And so, like I said, this is the sixth year that we've been doing this. We have a committee of people that work on this project and we try and promote things like National Night Out. We check out all the addresses of different parties throughout the communities, help the police verify information like that, little free libraries. We make a map of where they're located. So they're all things that are kind of happening in the community, but we want to kind of promote them and make people aware of them. This is one program though that we've kind of started and kept going. We found that the reason it seems to be a really good time of the year is January to spring seems kind of a downtime. Some days you can't get outside and enjoy the outside with sports or, you know, you're just inside more. And I have to tell you, books and reading, you can grab them anywhere. You can be outside on the sea by a beach. You can be at a park. You can be in a car. You can, not driving, of course. Riding, riding only. But anyway, you know, or during the winter, you know, when you're more housebound. And this has been a real popular program. We choose a different variety of books, some nonfiction, others fiction. The thing that people seem to, the feedback we get is they really like it when we have books that are written by Minnesota authors because they like to hear the person talk about the book, what went into writing it. And then the other thing is they like having local, local settings. So in Minnesota or in the upper Midwest. And so this year, our book, The Life We Bury, it hits both of those things. Alan Eskin is a Mankato lawyer who started writing these mystery thrillers. He's written about five now. He's gotten to be real popular in our area. And so people were looking for his books. And then the other thing, the book itself has a college student as the main character. He's a University of Minnesota student, grew up in Austin. He's having, he's trying to get through college with limited resources, family challenges. And the book starts out with him getting this writing assignment. And his assignment is to write the story, interview and write the story of a person who's had something interesting happen to them. He's kind of at a loss for, you know, who to choose because he doesn't have any family in the immediate Twin City area. So he ends up going to a nursing home and connecting with a man who has been convicted of a murder. So he's in hospice or he's, has months to live and he's in this nursing home because it's the humane place for him to be and just kind of waiting his time out. And so the story starts with him interviewing this man, getting to know his story and being convinced that this man has been unjustly convicted and trying to prove the man's innocence before he dies. And so it's real interesting. And then there's all sorts of side issues about how he's trying to balance taking care of an autistic brother who's, you know, in a dysfunctional family setting. And so it has a lot to talk about it. It's a thriller. It, you know, really gets, grabs your interest and I'm thinking that people are really going to enjoy it. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to invite people to read the book. It's available at Cashwise or the Village Shop, or you can check it out at the library, of course. And, and then look for the events that are coming up. And so I just wanted to leave you with a copy of the book, pass it around to the city council members, city staff, and then we have some of our promotion posters with it also. So again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mary.
You gonna read that or just sit on it?
Usually I've left it, I've left it at City Hall for whoever to grab. So if you would like to read it, just.
Citizens addressing the council. Anybody want to address the council? Already approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of December 27th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Oh, you're gonna let me do it? Second?
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried.
Get his feet wet eventually.
Jeez.
I tell ya.
A little slow in the draw.
Where's the buzzer when you need it? Okay. Consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is consideration for approval of short-term gambling license to 3M Club on April 9th, 2019 and September 7th, 2019. B is a change order number two, letting number 13, project number 18-13, the 2019 lift station improvement. And C is claims appropriation contract payments, register A.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Consent agenda number two, claims appropriation and contract payments, register B. My son has a check on there for his business, so I will abstain from voting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Review of the city's snow removal operations. Mr. Olson, how are you? Keep up the good work. Keep the snow to the north of us, will you please?
Yeah, we do, we got, we got folks dancing around the clock, so. This should be coming up. What I want to do is the presentation tonight is intended to give a little bit of an overview of snow removal operations in Hutchinson and also to hopefully answer questions that folks at home might have or anybody on the council as well. The, the thing to remember is that we're, we're really not in the snow removal business. We're in the transportation business. Our goal is to provide a service level that allows for emergency, commercial and personal travel. We do what we can to keep the roadways in a reasonably safe condition after weather events. City staff, we use a lot of different methods to monitor the weather. We have, you know, the current and predicted weather will affect some decisions about when we deploy and who we deploy and how many assets that we use in our efforts. So we, we have conversations internally with staff as to when to initiate snow removal services. I think the one thing to keep in mind is that we do not, we don't rely 100% on, on predictions because predictions aren't always right. You know, I wish I were in that business, you know, I could tell you what the weather's gonna do and if I'm wrong, nobody remembers that. But so, so we're very careful about, we're very careful about, you know, we have a lot of high-tech and a lot of websites and different things that we use to help. Mindot's got a great system that helps identify even some options for ice control and, and things like that. But the tried and true is get up and look out the window, which is probably what I do most every night. Either myself or one of the other staff members will do that, so. Keeping the cars off the road during snow events when we're cleaning up has a double benefit, really. At first, those operations are safer and second, there's a better job done of plowing all, all around. Everyone benefits from it. So I know we've seen some families do some very unique things to keep their vehicles off the streets and I appreciate every effort that people make towards that. And we've had the snow emergency in place since 2010. Typically what we'll do is we'll call that after about a four-inch snowfall. And quite honestly, we haven't had a ton of those. We had a few last year, but you know, that, that can happen. Basically with the snow emergency, basically if it's called during the day, notice we'll go out prior to four o'clock. Almost always it's out before noon. And then the parking is restricted from midnight to seven on residential streets. Streets with existing parking regulations are, remain in that same, same regulation.
John, just for a point of clarification, I think sometimes this is what gets confused in the public. Just because we get four inches doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be something called and so people need to really pay attention to those announcements.
Right, that's true. I think the biggest thing that you could do toward that end is there's an option to sign up for notifications on the website and that'll, you can choose if it goes through an email, text to a cellphone, for example. So those are, those are some options and, and I think that's, that's the biggest thing is just to be aware of that. And like I said, if you're, if, you know, kind of make it a habit of staying off the road, then you're, you're that much better off too, so. So generally by noon, but for sure by four, we'll make a decision as to whether notification for a snow emergency is necessary. We have a whole bunch of ways of notifying folks. Again, you know, what will happen is, is the operators will communicate with me and about any particular areas that are a problem and then I can communicate that with the police department and work together in that, so.
Did something get sent out again this fall to homes, kind of talking about the?
Yeah, it's in, also in the PRC handbook also.
Yeah, but I know I did get it in the mail on my utility bill.
Opens up. And then I think it's, it might talk about maybe the repeat, you know, there's that voice, that pasta.
Sometimes it can happen. Usually if there's, you know, some significant wind, that, that oftentimes we'll have to follow up with another one. So just because there was one doesn't mean there won't be one for the next evening also. So just, you know, keep, keep connected up with that. You know, you can call the emergency line, or the snow line anytime. City notification system is the easiest for most people, I think.
And just to clarify, when it says until 7:00 a.m.
Yep.
If the plow's been by your place, you should still stay off the street.
Right. Our ordinance is based on time. It's not based on whether the, you know, some, some cities have a plow curb-to-curb type ordinance. Ours is based on a timeframe. You know, seven hours overnight doesn't, you know, I, I understand that, that sometimes you gotta jockey a couple of cars around and things like that, but you know, any effort that, that can be made, it just makes the job that much better, so. You know, snow removal really isn't rocket science. There's really only two things you can do with it. You can move it out of the way or let it melt. And so of course, when we have weather conditions that are like we have had the last week or so, you know, we get a lot, we get a lot of help from Mother Nature clearing the roads off. When we can't, then we have to add chemical to suppress that freeze point on the ice and snow. Most common are chlorides. Basically, salt, sugar and alcohol are the three things that will suppress the freezing point temperature. And the most common, of course, being sodium chloride, basically the same as table salt, is what we're putting down for the most part. We also mix and do a super, almost to the point of super saturation with brine. That's basically a mix of water and salt. So it's about 24% salt in the water as we lay it down. So that helps kickstart all of the, the other chemicals that we're putting down. We haven't toyed with it yet, but Mindot has, at the Hatz facility here in Hutchinson, has some additives into their, that they can add to the brine that will drive that freeze point down even further. Those are typically, calcium chloride is a very common one. They're using beet sugar juice this year also. So there's a lot of options out there, but basically it's those three things, salt, sugar and alcohol. The focus for the last 15 years or so has, had always been on the, on the chemical side. How much to put down and what to put down when and, and things like that. So there's a lot of focus on chemical use. You know, I think because of number one, the cost of that material, number two, the environmental issues that go along with it, you know, our, our take has been to really focus in on the mechanical side of snow removal and limit the amount. And you can see, you know, we're slowly dropping in the total amount of sand and salt that we use. And that's kind of, that's deliberately to try to account for those two issues, cost and, and the effects of salt on the environment. I think overall as the snow, snow removal and snow plowing off of roads and things like that worldwide, you're starting to see the pendulum swing a little bit the other way. And there's been some pretty unique and creative innovations in the mechanical removal that I think, you know, we'll start to see here in the United States. Certainly, I look forward to that part of it because I think that's, that's the most effective means and also the easiest on the environment as well, so. So we used more than two dozen vehicles and equipment that are owned by the city of Hutchinson in, in our efforts to move snow out of the way. We have snow plows and wing plows and pushers and blowers and all that kind of tools to move it mechanically. And then, you know, we, we definitely, we do use sand salt. We use salt only in certain circumstances. We've used brine in certain areas, you know, but we try to limit that again to, to those areas only that are super critical. Just for, we just have to wait till April. It'll get nicer in April. So a lot of, lot of city staff involved in snow and ice. There's 27 of us that are, you know, are out there at, at any given time or combinations of that, that crew that you see there. Right now, we do have one vacant position in the operations and maintenance side, so we kind of backfilled that with one other operator in water wastewater. And, and I think, you know, we're, we're in the process of filling that vacant position, hopefully within the next several weeks here, so. We, we use up to eight contractors for snow, hauling snow. The city does have two trucks that we use for snow removal efforts and hauling it away. So depending on the type of event, you know, we'll use anywhere from just two of our own trucks all the way up to eight contracted trucks plus the snow blower. And I think, you know, just the flexibility is necessary. Basically, if you're not off of Main Street by quarter after five, you're dead. It's, it gets very busy in the five o'clock hour. So we do everything we possibly can to get ourselves out of the way before that time of day. So sometimes we have to use quite a few more pieces of equipment to make it happen. Personnel hours in general over the last 10 seasons has gone down. You can see that it varies widely. That's obviously due to wide swings in the weather conditions. You know, one of the things that really affects it is blowing snow. We haven't had to deal with that too much this year. Short periods of very high activity were the tail of last winter. Is a good example, if you remember that, 30 inches of snow in April last year and much of it in a weekend, basically. So that can really throw things in, in a tis. So we, we currently use three wheel loaders. The ones that we have are equipped with a snowing and a snow plow. They're all assigned to various routes. One of them is also the carrier for the snow blower. So if we do need to remove snow, then we pull that one off of its route and get that done. We have six snow plow trucks that are used and assigned to priority, primary routes and de-icing operations. Most of the time when we're de-icing, we will just come bring five trucks in, kind of scatter them the cardinal directions and then also have one in the downtown area working together. Can usually get done in about two and a half hours that way on a typical event. So the trucks that we have are all set up for sand and salt distribution, brine application. And yeah, really that salt brine's function is to wet the material as it comes out and kind of kickstart the chemical process and, and get the melting happening.
John, when you talked about other mechanical means in the past, there's been questions about the gates that help.
Yeah.
Keep the snow out of the end of the driveways.
Right.
Is that one of the things or not?
That's, there's, there are fewer people doing that today than there ever have been. The really only effective piece of equipment that, that works well on is a motor grader because you have the long wheelbase, a lot, very steady, very heavy piece of equipment. They don't work very well with loaders. They don't work at all with a truck, per se. So most of the places don't have them and I know some cities that I've talked to in, in North Dakota, they actually have that as a service in the city, but it's only after specific amounts of snow and that service is funded by a different tax levy than the general fund. So it's a separate cost above and beyond what normal operations would be. So that's, that's what I've found as kind of being the standard.
And I will say, and we've talked about it.
Yeah.
I think our biggest concern, it probably doubles the amount of time it takes.
Exactly, yes.
To remove snow, which then doubles your.
Right.
Cost.
Yeah. And then you're in a three hundred thousand dollar loader versus a two hundred thousand dollar truck, and you're in that loader for probably twice, almost twice as long, so.
Plus a little less flexibility in how you use that piece of equipment.
Correct, yep, yep. Uh, we, uh, we also use, uh, several light trucks. They're a very important part of what we do. We provide storm over, s- snow removal services in alleys and at various public facilities. Oftentimes, a light truck is, is the answer to that. When we're addressing light snow removal needs, um, so wait, let's say we have a snow event, um, you know, we plow, plow a little bit up, uh, along the sidewalks downtown. Typically, we'll come in that next following morning and clean that up. If it's a lighter of snow of maybe two inches or less, maybe even two and a half inches or less, um, we can just do it with, uh, with our own trucks. We can just push it around the corner, stack it up, load it off into the trucks and, and go that way. This last larger snow event that we had, um, we actually did not use the snow blower because the snow was so wet, it would've just plugged the snow blower up. So what we ended up doing is pushing it off of the main street, putting it in the intersections, and then loading it off, uh, and hauling it that way. So it, it really depends on the type of event, uh, how we'll handle that, but. We have five, uh, skid steer loaders. Um, we use two in the downtown area. Third is used, uh, around the downtown area also, uh, but can head out and do other public works facilities. And those are very, very, uh, versatile pieces of equipment. Uh, we also use four agricultural tractors. Uh, three of them are, uh, the ones that we rent for the leaf vacuum service. We just retain those. We purchased the plow and the front mounting, uh, front th- three-point hitch mounting system. And, uh, so we take care of those right. Soon as the, we're done pulling leaves, we hang the three-point on them and now they're snow plows. Now in April, we'll bring them back and, uh, Lord willing, we won't get a snowstorm like we did last year after we brought them back, so. Uh, fuel consumption, the trend is also down over a ten-year period. Again, the wide swings are the different weather conditions that we faced, but we have note of, noticed that we've, uh, probably in the five to six percent range, uh, been able to see some improvements based on the type of fuel additives we've been using. So we've seen a decrease in the amount of fuel, uh, cost per hour, um, because of those, those things. Sidewalks and trails, this is a huge, uh, huge undertaking that typically, um, the Parks Department is the, is the most involved in. And, uh, the way our system is set up is a priority system. So downtown is, that's the beginning. Once we get out of the downtown area, then we have three different priority areas that we'll hit. And, uh, you know, typically the priority one routes in the downtown are done concurrent with the other snow removal efforts taking place. Not always, um, once in a while you might not quite get done with priority one that, that same day. More often than not, even into priority twos are done concurrently. I think that's helped this year. You know, we have one, in essence, one more operator, uh, that, that came to Public Works. And so there's one more operator that we had stolen from Parks to use that now is available to do this. So they're, they're actually oftentimes getting beyond priority two even. But the third, um, tier is, is typically those that are out to the far south and the southeast. That being said, that's important to remember that if it snows again, the whole system starts over. So there could be times when we're not there in what would seem like we should be after the snowfall, but it's almost always because it snowed again and we gotta start the whole clock over again for that, so. Adjacent property owners, uh, for sidewalks, they're generally responsible for, um, keeping four feet of it clear. I know in conditions like we've had in the last couple of weeks, that's virtually impossible. So my, uh, advice is, and what I've been trying to get across to everybody, is you can go buy a set of cleats, usually fifteen, twenty dollars, and that sure as the heck is a lot less than what my, what a copay or what your, what your deductible would be on your health plan. So it's, it's worthwhile to invest in a pair, keep them with you, and utilize them. Cause the, the freeze thaw cycles that we've had in the last couple of weeks, um, that ice has bonded onto the concrete so hard that it, we might be living with it, um, till spring, so something to keep in mind. There are sidewalks that we identified on that map before, uh, that we will take care of, um, but those are discretionary, you know, and we also have to be, uh, cognizant of our, uh, our priority system. And then, uh, sidewalks that aren't cleaned, um, we have staff that will inspect areas and notify folks if there's a problem. And, and again, I think everybody's aware of what's going on right now with the condition of the sidewalks, so, uh, another reason to go grab yourself a set of cleats and, and use them, so.
John, I agree with that, but there are people who, when it snows, they just don't even go out and shovel sidewalks.
Right, and typically that, that's the ones that we wanna find
Right.
And connect up with and, and, you know, uh, engineering staff helps us with that, so.
And I understand that some of them might be elderly
Right.
And maybe they need some help, you know?
Yeah.
You're hoping that they would have a neighbor or friend
Right.
Or somebody who could help them with that.
Definitely, yeah, cause more often than not, it's, it isn't that big of a job to, to do it. I mean, um, you have that melting issue in the springtime also when you get
Right.
You know, the two sides melt and runs across and, you know, so you take whatever reasonable efforts you, you, you can to, to take care of it, but, uh, you know, the biggest thing is to keep it open. Like you said, that, so you're walking down a, a street and you don't run into a six-inch pile of snow for one house.
Right, and it's not easy for your postman
Right.
Or your postwoman to be delivering your mail
A lot of services.
If you don't have anything shoveled for them.
Yep, so. Uh, overnight parking, we have several city parking lots that have overnight parking in them. And, uh, whenever possible, what we like to do is to clean those as the opportunity presents itself. And then people typically can move to a stall that has been cleaned. More often than not, that, that, that works. And we just, you know, appreciate when people do that, uh, move where the, where it is clean and give us a chance to clean it up. But eventually, there will be some heavier snow event where it's necessary to end up cleaning overnight lots. And the process that we use is, uh, typically the sign that's up on the very top, the black on white, that'll be up there pretty much all the time, uh, in the areas with designated overnight parking. What we do is the, we'll go out the neck, that, that day when we get done cleaning up, we'll hang those, uh, signs, the red ones over the top of these. And then that allows, uh, parking elsewhere within the lot until we get that cleaned up, at which time we'll pull the signs back off and, uh, then, of course, they'd need to get back into that designated parking area. So I think a pretty, pretty simple system. I don't know of, how to do it better. You know, just encourage folks that do use those overnight stalls. Uh, you can go down and you can have, uh, you register with the police department and get a permit. Basically what it is, is a way to get ahold of the driver or the owner of that vehicle. So if there are issues, they can make it, make some efforts to co- contact somebody versus just calling the tow truck and yanking it, so. Um, when we get going there, uh, when we're getting ready to clean up, you know, we'll run through the different lots, work with the police department to get as many of them moved as we can or towed if they need to be towed and, and things like that, so. Uh, we do have, uh, public snow disposal site. It's just north of the Armory on Adam Street. Um, there, we don't provide any services to that snow disposal site, so the users of it are responsible for maintaining their piles. The other city sites are not able to be used by private haulers. And the city site, the primary site is the Bass Pond, and we'll do whatever, we'll do what we can to maximize the use of that, just because it's a shorter run from the downtown area where most of the snow is removed, so. Uh, just a reminder again that it's a violation of statutes and ordinances for private parties to move snow from private property onto or across a public roadway. I think, uh, you hear that, uh, reminder message oftentimes from MnDOT also, but just remember that, uh, you know, uh, you don't push it onto or across public roadways. Uh, violators can be subject to the consequences of those statutes and ordinances. And when we have, when we do see it, you know, typically, uh, we'll try to connect up with somebody to teach them why that isn't a good idea. And then if it persists, of course, then we can, um, take other means if necessary, so. Private snow removal contractors in Hutchinson, um, the, uh, or private snow removal at all, uh, basically if there's any issues with the snow removal service, it's the property owner's responsibility. They're the ones who hired the contractors, so. So that's who we talk to when there are issues. And then if there are questions, oftentimes the contractor will also get ahold of us and work some things out. All of the activities of a private snow removal contractor are considered permitted. The, our ordinance requires a permit for, um, but many years ago, we basically said they're, they are permitted and then if there's any significant violations of statutes or ordinances, um, we could come in and, um, rescind their, uh, or suspend their privileges to perform this service in the city. Typically don't have a lot of problem with, uh, with private contractors. They're a very important part of getting the city up and running in a given, after a given event, so, um, vast, vast majority, um, very easy to work with. If we do have issues, oftentimes we can comm- communicate and get it taken care of right there, and that's a good thing, so. Damage to property can happen even with the greatest of care taken by operators, um, and so our policy does, um, consider that we'd be responsible for damage caused by physical contact with the plows. And, uh, obviously the most common, uh, item that's out there in the right of way and is a huge target is a mailbox. And, uh, because people have every kinda conceivable configuration of mailbox, um, we determine that we would provide just a maximum, uh, reimbursement for putting that up. If they want us to put it up, they're gonna get a one of three options. So oftentimes, uh, you know, we can communicate and they'll decide to do it on their own if they want some decorative thing, and then we'll reimburse up to that amount, so. And then, uh, you know, we're definitely gonna go out and take a peek, whether it's myself, uh, one of this, the lead operator, lead operator, police officer, whatever, to try to figure out, was there contact with that particular, uh, structure that was, and did we actually cause the problem, uh, those kinda things, so. Services onto private property are really, uh, we don't do that. We don't go on private property. There are a couple rare, rare exceptions would be as if there is an emergency service call to that property, you know, definitely, and if we can help out, we'll help out. That could be in, you know, fire, police, medical, um, natural gas, or utility problems, uh, those kinds of things. Um, once in a great while, there are certain areas that, of private property that we might wanna cross in order to make our efforts more effective and efficient. And if that's the case, then we'll connect up with the private property owner and get an agreement with them to, uh, to utilize their property. Probably the best example of that would be snow fence. We have several areas, particularly out on South Grade Road to the west, that where, where we put up snow fence. And then, uh, we connect up with the property owners and the farmers and, you know, get everybody on board to say, yep, come and, you know, you can have a snow fence here, so that's a pretty common, uh, thing. Big thing is if anybody has questions, concerns, um, you know, call the street department, three-two, three-two-zero-two-three-four-four-two-one-nine. If it's on after hours or weekend type things, you can use the non-emergency number for the police department. They can always get ahold of one of us and, uh, we can figure out how we can help out, so. And that's all I have, if, unless there's other questions or...
Um, can you just touch on again the emergency notification system?
Sure.
I've just called up the city website and right at the top of that, there's, um, a bar with several icons I can scroll across.
Right.
But the emergency notifications.
Right in that, that rotating news banner.
Yeah.
That, that kinda right near the top, so that, that's the best place to, to get on and, and get that. Very simple, just need a registration, register your device or email address or whatever.
Yeah, it'll send text messages, it'll
Voice message.
Leave a message on your phone.
Correct.
Home phone, cellphone.
Yeah.
Email.
Very nice, and then we also utilize that system for, uh, mosquitoes. So if folks are interested in knowing when the trucks are coming, you know, that's another good place, you can choose to be notified for that as well, so.
Anything else for John?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion of, uh, legislative priorities for two thousand nineteen.
Um, Mayor Council, last year was actually, I think, the first formal year where we, or the first year that we formally put together a list of some of our legislative priorities. Obviously with the changeover in the council, um, I delayed this a little bit. I know last year, I think we probably touched on it in November. Um, but with Dave coming on board, I felt it'd be prudent to at least have him be a part of that conversation. And so what I did was I brought back the list that we had put together last year. Um, unfortunately, there wasn't really a whole lot of, of movement that took place. I know the, the deputy registrar item was up for discussion, and I believe that there was a bill that was approved, but eventually got vetoed by the governor. That never went through. Obviously, there was no movement in the LG standpoint. I think the only thing that was kinda addressed was some of our environmental, specifically regarding the, the labeling, um, and some, putting some money aside and fell apart and never really went anywhere at the end of the, the last session. And so unfortunately, a lot of what we had put together, you know, wasn't really, um, addressed. There was, like I said, a little bit of regulatory relief in regards to the envi- environmental side of things, but I don't believe there was ever that official ban that we were asking about, um, regarding the wipes. And so what I did was I kinda presented that to you for, um, to include those same items again, um, this upcoming year. Obviously, what I would do is go back and formulate this document to, to, to update it. I also included some items that, um, through conversations with staff and even some of the actions that we took last year to, to put out there for consideration. If you look at the staff ideas, I included the... If you look at the staff ideas, I included the, and we've been having some conversations regarding the Lakes River Basin, the general government, the controlling of sale strong beer, spirits, and wines. We actually adopted a resolution last year in regards to that matter. Miles had sent some stuff for consideration regarding skilled workforce. And I just included a copy of the League of Minnesota Cities Priorities, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, two organizations that we're members of. And then the police chief did hand me a document that the Chief Association has put out there. Now, we've generally stated is that, that when it comes to League of Minnesota Cities and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, we generally support their legislative priorities, and we're generally not going to restate them unless we feel it's of utmost importance, if you wanna say, to the, to the city of Hutchinson. So I wanted at least provide these to you to see if there's anything you'd like to see changed, added, taken out, so I can bring something back at a, at a future meeting. You know, we use this obviously to, to discuss with our local legislatures, and it also gives you that document that you can hand out if you're down at the Capitol visiting for one reason or the other. I know last year, we did send a copy off to our, our legislatures and a couple of those items, and I think we did end up having a couple of conversations with them on. One thing too, I'd like to try to do this year, and maybe even potentially a cooperative effort with the county, is meet with our legislatures. And we've tried to do that locally the last couple of years, but more of a push towards that. So with that being said, I at least wanted to open up to the council to see, you know, is there some things we'd like to see added, taken off, changed?
I know on the health part of it, I know that you talked about the age of, you know, to the 21, the minimum age for purchasing tobacco. I'd like to have, have them look at regulating the vaping somehow, because I, you know, according to my grandchildren, cigarettes are no big deal no more. It's the vaping that's, that's, that's really running rampant, I guess. So I'd like maybe, I don't know how to maybe?
I can see what they're, I'm assuming, I know it's, it's a big topic, especially among the school districts, I'm assuming there's probably some language out there that we could look to potentially add to the health portion of that.
And if we do that, maybe along that same line as some of the other tobacco products that might be available at the convenience stores as far as the flavored things that seem to have more of an appeal to some of the younger audience?
I know the other, the other thing that you mentioned, Matt, was the labeling about flushable wipes. I know there was a thing on the radio I was listening to today, they brought that up, that there's a lot of, lot of cities in the metro area that are running into big, big bills of repairs for pumps and everything else.
Well, I think we had over a $200,000 repair a few years ago regarding it.
They're just not really flushable.
No.
Well, they flush real good.
Yeah. It's where it goes afterwards.
There was something on, was that NPR or the Tribune today?
Tribune you sent me, yeah, from Great Britain.
What was that called? Don't Feed the Blob, or the Grease Blob, or?
Fatberg.
And it was this Fatberg, yeah, that was it. And it's this thing in England that's blocking a sewer that?
I saw that.
It's like, what, 200 feet long?
Yes. But that was, wasn't that mostly grease?
Grease and wipes and?
Fish and chips.
Fish and chips.
That's enough about that.
You brought it up.
I know, I know.
I had one other thing on the environmental part is saying something about not giving cities who are currently paying debt on improvements to wastewater, water systems that were required, improvements for their permit, not to have to take on added burden while they're paying debt.
That's something we've talked about, you know, we're, we're currently in the process of going through a renewal, and we're still paying off our, our old debt, and we're more or less being told potentially that it's not good enough, and we're gonna have to put more into our plans, so.
As far as, like, the ones that Miles and the chief, the economic development ones, has there been any coordination with the school district or other people? I guess I?
I think that's a question I have to ask Miles. I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to him yet. I'm not sure exactly where the school district sits on some of those.
Minskew itself, the first one with the pilot grant, certainly support that, and I don't have a problem with that because it's really what we did here already. But the other ones seem like they're a little bit more.
Sure.
Be nice to have some input from them. Even the loan forgiveness program, I think a lot of the loans are through the federal government, and they have some existing programs, and maybe not, I looked, and they don't have it for something like this, but. And then same with the PD, you mentioned there on the chief's website, I, I've looked at that, but I didn't see anything.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I pulled it right off of the website.
Okay, and that's what?
And I, and I would just note with, I'm not even necessarily saying that with the Chief Association, it's something that we want to include in ours, knowing that that's something they're working on, but at least wanted to kinda get that out there for the council.
I just noticed there was a couple of them that had like I statements to them, so I didn't know if that was part of?
I'm assuming that's probably came in from the, might have been even from our local chief, so. Well, I've got some ideas, you know, I'll look to put to a form, and I'll, I'll get some additional information regarding some of these items to bring back for the council to potentially consider here, to maybe have a rough draft at your next meeting, depending on how that is, either prove it then or at your first meeting in February.
Larry, moving on, discussion of creating a marketing plan for the city of Hutchinson.
I know Councilmember Cook had asked for me to put this on the agenda, so maybe I'll just hand it over to him.
Sure. I guess, you know, when I was thinking about our strategic plan, there was a marketing component to that. I know EDA markets to site selectors, the Chamber markets, you know, the visitors and things like that, but I was wondering more on, you know, just through growth of the city and trying to market the city and our quality of life to potential new residents. And, and on the offshoot of that, obviously, other people see that, maybe it reinforces site selectors. But you think, you know, the school district, and they're going through budgeting cycles just in anticipation for less kindergartners coming in. So, and then just, again, as the demographics age, trying to attract new families helps everybody in the school, from our workforce and the schools, every segment of our business community, and so if you Google, you know, city marketing, you see that it's really what's starting to happen more and more. And there are certain ways to do it that are more effective than others, and, but I just thought maybe this is a good time to start having that discussion. And Matt had mentioned maybe doing an RFP, just to see what type of response and a plan that experienced people would come forward with, because I don't think, I know staff doesn't have the time to do it or the expertise to do it, but maybe put out a request and see what might come in with that, so.
A couple of things, you know, Steve sent me some stuff that were rebranding. You may recall during our strategic planning conversations last year, we talked about we're gonna need to kinda update our city logo. It's, it's a good logo, but it hasn't been touched since, I think, the 90s? And it's formatted in a manner that we, it's difficult for us to use, if you wanna say, in the digital world.
Just 'cause the dam doesn't look like that anymore?
The dam doesn't look like that anymore.
Chief will go down to the same spot. We don't have pine trees down there?
You know, and so, you know, some of the things that I've looked at, that Steve has sent me, and just looking at what other cities done, they've gone through what's called a rebranding, which is kinda a whole new look of the city, including the logo, which then gets packaged into some sort of marketing plan. But I guess, you know, if this is the route that we wanna go, and as Steve and I have talked, I have, I don't think any of us have the expertise and staff. I quite frankly have no clue even what something like this would cost. And that's where the benefit of, you know, of simply doing an RFP, saying, hey, this is kinda what we're thinking about, this is what we're looking at doing, what's out there? That at the very least would give us an idea of something to look at, you know, from more of a visual sense, but also give us a better idea cost-wise, what are we looking at investing, so.
And I would hope that other groups within the community would be a part of it. I mean, because it does benefit the community from our industries to the school district, to, you know, the local healthcare community, and, you know, so really, it's a community effort, but this would be a way to at least get the ball rolling and investigate what might be possible with that.
Do you have any examples of communities that are already doing it that we can check out at all?
One, yeah, I could send some emails or forward those examples.
He'd sent me some examples there, so.
Matt, one in Minnesota that I just, again, as I was Googling different things, I came across an article in the Tribune from this summer, talking about this very thing. And Halleck was one of the communities that was talked about, and way up in the northwest, but they felt it was important for their community and the future of their community to try to be a little more aggressive with it. But I'll send forward that email that I'd sent to Matt. Again, you Google, a lot, obviously, large communities do stuff, but more and more small communities are starting to do it too.
I'm not opposed to the idea. Like I said, when we went through the strategic planning course, rebranding was in there. I mean, we discussed that, so I think it's probably time for us to look at that.
No, like I said, at the very least, it doesn't hurt for us to put together an RFP. It'll at least give us an idea of what we're potentially looking at, you know, even if it's, you know, something that's gonna be an investment, well, then maybe that's something we need to start planning for, at least gives us an idea, so.
When I was driving into town, I saw the Hutchinson sign, and I thought, oh, you know, we're talking about trying to attract families, for families, and, well, Hutchinson was founded by family. And so there's definitely a connection there, and maybe that's something to play off of at some point.
I'll work with staff to put together an RFP for you guys to consider.
Well, we always could be like Geely and tell them that we're gonna have the?
Well, that's another one, right? That is one that comes up.
Yeah. They are gonna have the Olympics there or something. I think that's what the angle they use, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was another example.
I believe there was a?
When was this?
I believe there was an Illinois city this past football season that sponsored a bowl, so.
Geely does, for April Fools every year, they have a blast of something that's out there, so. They're pretty clever.
But I, you know, you're right, Steve, there, there's, you know, coming out of St. Cloud on 15, they, New Ulm has a billboard up, shop New Ulm, I mean, we, you know, so.
And I wanna make sure, you know, we've got, the Chambers doing?
Well, they have, they're much in hush.
Yep, they're doing some of that, and even the EDA has done some of that, but I think what Steve's getting at is more of a global effort. I mean, I talk global, citywide effort, because Chambers focuses on a specific area, which is great, and so is the EDA.
Saying why people might, should wanna move here, live here. All righty. Unfinished business, proposed changes to the airport hangar rental policy.
Mayor and council, the policy that's in your packet is resulted from some of the changes that were identified after the November council meeting. They were brought back to the Airport Commission in December and recommended to come and be approved for this meeting. I think much, much of the changes were up in the area of, excuse me, the most, the biggest changes were the accessibility hangars and the large aircraft hangars, to clarify those two areas, so. Again, the Airport Commission recommends approval and certainly can answer any questions.
Is there another policy that was, you were thinking about?
The agreement form itself, there's somebody from the League of Cities Insurance Trust working with me to review that, to make sure we have that correct. You know, talked with Mark about it, and there's liability changes that have taken place, and there may be a gap in what most aircraft owners have a million-dollar policy along with their typical, the typical aircraft insurance policy. But some changes in, you know, that we're up at closer to a million and a half is what, what the liability would be, so we're trying to figure out how to, how to best connect that gap, so. So yes, there will be one more coming, the, the actual agreement itself, so.
You start.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by myself, to approve the airport hangar rental policy. Any other discussion? How in favor? I oppose, carry. Don't go too far, John. Street sweeper acquisition.
Yeah, just worked with city staff to go through and, and review options for street sweepers. Obviously, sweeping is defense number one to protect the waterways. Effective street sweeping results in much lower maintenance costs over time. It's a heck of a lot easier to remove pollutants off the surface than it is out of a pipe or out of a pond, or out of a river, whatever the case. And sweeping really is key for the water quality, for environmental stewardship, for pedestrian vehicle safety, so you're not slipping and sliding all over the place. And certainly, you know, another big factor is community aesthetics, how things look. Sweepers are probably the worst possible condition that you can imagine, putting a machine into, you're dealing with assault, abrasives, oddball shaped things of every size, shape, and configuration that, you know, wear on it all the time, and, you know, certainly oftentimes can cause damage too. We do have two sweepers currently. We have a 2011 Challenger mechanical sweeper, and we have a 2003 Vacal vacuum sweeper. We, there are a place for both kinds of sweepers. It's kinda comparing what you could do with a vacuum cleaner at home compared to a broom and a dustpan. Basically, the mechanical sweeper is like a broom and a dustpan. That's pretty much what it is. And, and so we do have a need for both. The primary sweeper is the mechanical sweeper, 'cause that's most of the time you're The primary sweeper is the mechanical sweeper because that's most of the time you're dealing with heavier materials and, and things like that. We use the vacuum more for the light organic material. A lot of times the trees will seed out and we'll run through with the Vacal after that. But typically you'll see the mechanical sweeper out and about. We did do, reviewed six different types, ended up coming up with a recommendation. Went, brought that to the fleet committee who kind of agreed that, you know, yeah, all things considered, we might want to consider a bigger machine. But everybody recognized that there was, you know, some financial issues. We've got a large ongoing project in the stormwater fund. We also have several larger projects on the CIP. So the decision really was to make, to proceed with the purchase of the smaller of the two machines, which is actually a direct replacement for what we are using today. Elgin just bought that Challenger sweeper, have made several improvements to it since then. And so we're not going backwards by doing this by any means. It's exactly what we have today and that has served us well. So with that, I recommend that approve purchase order 19847.
And I will just note to the council, this is based off of a state bid.
Correct, yes.
And then the financing?
The financing, our hope was to pay for all of it out of the stormwater funds. But with the Landon Park project still kind of sitting out there, we're going to enter, enter loan fund with the sewer department. And so we'll basically self-finance it ourselves with the hope, depending where bids come in, that we might just pay it all off. But not knowing exactly where everything's going to lay out, we, you know, not wanting to dip too much into the cash of the stormwater fund, we'll use our sewer fund as an interim loan fund with probably like a three percent interest to pay ourselves back.
John, what kind of a dollar differential was there from the big one to the, this one here?
About eighty thousand, Dave. Yeah, so that, that one came in at roughly two hundred and seventy thousand. This one was a hundred and ninety rough numbers, so.
So what did the bigger one do in comparison to this?
Bigger one's just bigger. Bigger broom and a bigger dustpan.
Oh, okay.
Little bit more efficient in that way. Like I said, we've, we've used the smaller of the two for the last seven years and it's done a good job for us. Nobody's concerned about that. It's just, you know, so as we talked about it, you know, recognizing that we have this circumstance where we have these, you know, multi-year projects and some pretty large projects looming, that maybe the best way to do it would be to kind of put this one, if, if it's purchased tonight, put this one and the vacuum sweeper kind of on a similar, similar timetable to be replaced so that we might be able to hopefully go with a single unit down the road. That's, that's what we're hoping for. We did look at a couple of sweepers that are hybrids of both vacuum and, and, and right now the technology's not quite there. It's getting there. You know, there's just some things you can't clean up with a shop vac that you can with a shovel or a, or a broom and a dustpan. You know, it's, it's just the way it is. And, and so that, that technology gets better and better. And, you know, we looked at many, many different ones that could potentially get us into a spot. The other option we looked at, we could consider down the line would be to not replace the Vacal straight up, but get a smaller vacuum machine because again, the, the times of the year that we use it are somewhat limited compared to the mechanical sweeper.
Thank you.
Yep.
So John, how much, how much do you pick up in a spring, springtime comparing to what you put down in the wintertime?
I would say we're about eighty percent to ninety percent we pick up of, of that material. So, you know, over a thousand ton.
Is that used for anything or what do you do with it?
It, it is not. What we do is we have to screen it to remove any of the solids out of it. And then we haul those solid or overs to the landfill. And then that sand is, can be used then as, you know, in different areas for fill or projects or whatever the case. Most of what we've been doing up to now has been added into the, to the bit con that's, that's produced at Creek site. Because a little bit of sand in there doesn't hurt. Washing sand and re, trying to reuse the sand, that's been tried, doesn't work. Basically, if you, if you look at a piece of sand under a magnifying glass or microscope or whatever, it's cubed in shape. And what happens is you drop it on the road and the people drive over it. And now it's no longer cubed in shape, it's more like a, a little ball. So, so it doesn't cut the ice like it, like it does when it's fresh, so.
And then just with this piece of equipment now, I mean, were maintenance costs going up? Is that what's driving it now versus next year?
Yes, yes, definitely. This is not a real super heavy built machine. It's on a one-ton chassis, so, but I think it's nineteen five GBW, something like that. So it's not a real heavy piece of machinery. And then you subject it to that kind of wear and tear, you know. Seven years has been our standard. I think we're on eight with this one by the time we get it replaced. You know, I think some of the newer ones that we did look at are much more robustly built than they have been in the past. And, you know, a lot of people are getting ten, eleven, twelve years out of, out of the newer styles just because everything's thicker and more stout and stronger, so.
Well, still getting good money out of where they trade in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we do have some parts that will go with that. Conveyor systems for these machines are as kind of the most common changeover item, wear item, if you want to call it. And so we have one in the box that'll go with it so that, that helped with, with the trade-in value, so.
All righty, motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve the street sweeper. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie?
Thank you.
Transportation alternative grant application for Truck Highway seven twenty-two and Montana street pedestrian crossing. Can't I take it this is you?
Yeah, just want to bring this back to, I guess, your attention, your approval, formal approval of the grant application. It wasn't within your packet. I did send it out last Friday when we completed compiling the grant information and getting it over to the state right before their deadline late Friday afternoon. Nothing new here. There was a lot of information in that application. I think we have a good application. The funding, and I should mention, you did previously approve the resolutions that were included in that application at the November twenty-seventh meeting. The funding, it's an eighty-twenty split. We're requesting a hundred and forty thousand dollars and that means the city would have to have a match of thirty-five thousand dollars. That's all estimated at this point. The project would have to be bid and then, you know, conceivably adjust the funding a little bit based on the actual bids. But that is never given with federal dollars either. So in essence, we're applying for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And if we're fortunate enough to get that allocation, we'll develop the project and go for bids. Hopefully we'll get twenty, twenty-two dollars. There's a little bit of twenty, twenty-two monies. The vast majority of this solicitation is dollars in twenty, twenty-three. And then kind of a kicker to that or a sidebar, potentially, and I don't know if this is going to be a reality, but I'm having some discussions with Mendat about possibly doing an advanced construction agreement. And possibly if we do get this allocation come late, well, it'll be determined late March, early April. So we won't be able to deliver this project this year, but conceivably we could deliver this project next year or even maybe potentially in twenty, twenty-one. That's my hope if we do, if we're fortunate enough to get the grant that possibly delivered a little earlier. That's it, yeah. Just following policy, wanted to get this back in front of you to formally approve the, the grant application.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the grant application. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie? Setting council workshop for January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen at four P.M. To review lakes and river basin improvement preliminary design study item.
And Mayor and Council, you may recall there was a subcommittee appointed this a few months back. And so I think they're kind of ready to give an update to the city council on, on the progress that's been made to that.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to set that workshop for January twenty-second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carrie? Setting city administrator performance review.
Going to take a long time.
You know, yesterday at your reorganizational meeting, you did make the decision to rehire Mr. Yannick for another year. And as a result of that, we're at that time of the year.
There is a process that could change, so.
Exactly. But we are at that time of the year where we customarily review his performance from the previous year. And we're asking you to consider a date and time to have Matt's review. We've had it at all different times in the past. We've had it as a totally separate meeting. We've had it before council meetings. We've had it as part of a regular meeting agenda. I don't know what the council's feeling is, but you have some workshops coming up in the next couple of meetings. It doesn't appear that the agenda for the next meeting, January twenty-second, is going to be too long. So I did speak with Brenda Ewing today, the Human Resources Director, and we were thinking perhaps adding it to the end of the agenda for the next meeting, January twenty-second, if you guys are acceptable to that.
That's fine with me, sure.
I'm okay with it.
We would put it on the agenda, but then go into closed session if.
That'd be my preference.
Customarily, what would happen is it would be like the last item of the agenda for that evening. And then we would just recess into closed session to conduct the review.
And come back and open session and adjourn.
Basically adjourn, right?
Somebody want to set that?
I'll make that a motion to put that on the agenda for the January twenty-second meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to set that.
I want to bring in pizza after.
What's that?
A good administrator might provide some food or something.
Wish you'd call him.
So with you.
Call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie?
So with you having set that as his review date, Brenda will be sending you the materials and to give her the input she needs to compile all of that information. And she did tell me that she would have no problem getting that compiled previous to the next meeting. So be looking for that then.
Excellent, thanks, Mark. We have minutes, reports from community committees, boards or commissions. The EDA board minutes from November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Ken? Yes, just one thing quickly, kind of spills into the legislature priorities and the likes. The Minnesota chapter of the American Public Works Association, which is a large group of industry professionals across the state, has actually developed a, a group of twenty-four stakeholders, transportation stakeholders, I guess, professionals across the Mendat district across the state. I'm on that list. And basically what's evolving here is, I guess, the industry recognizing what's going to play out at the state legislature, more than likely on the transportation front this, this session. There's going to be a lot of gas tax discussion and other transportation funding mechanisms to come. And the industry is going to try to get ahead of that and really, they're calling it the Raise Our Grade campaign. You might be familiar with the American Society of Civil Engineers comes out with a grade of each state's infrastructure, an overall grade, you know, A, B, C, D, F, obviously. And they do that for every state. They do that, an overall infrastructure grade, and then they, they grade specific infrastructure, public works, items, streets, utilities, ports, airports and, and so on. But anyways, I might be contacting, you know, between Matt from administrative standpoint and, and you guys from a policymaker standpoint to tell our story a little bit. And I'm going to put some thought to it, you know, what our transportation needs, what's our unique needs. We obviously have the, the four-lane road, you know, dilemma that's been talked about for decades and decades here in Hutchinson and, and what that means to our industries or the growth of our industries and, and the likes. So that's, that's one scenario. I don't know if you guys have others off the top of your mind. But if you want to put some thought to that, let me know by all means. Because, yeah, I'm being asked to, to generate ideas and stories because that's really what they want to, how they want to approach this is more from the standpoint of telling a story, you know, to get the legislatures, legislators' attention.
Do you, would you also welcome stories or, you know, from maybe other people in the community? Some of our industries and their transportation?
Yeah, for certain.
Trucking companies, for example?
Yeah, no, if you know, somebody that wants to, is welcome to being, you know, reached out to, to, to tell a story by all means.
But didn't you do that last time for when you did something with two twelve?
Well, we've done resolutions of support and, yeah, they did the Southwest Corridor Coalition has done a, basically an industry survey in the area, yeah. And, and they've reached out to the industries, the freight haulers and the likes. And, yeah, this is more awareness base and like I said, they're, they're trying to do something. They think it's a little more unique than surveys and resolutions of support, letters of support. It's really trying to frame the, yeah, frame this issue up with, with stories and, you know, unique needs that exist across the state. That's it.
Thanks, Ken. Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing else than I.
Mary? Do you have anything?
The only thing I have is, and we've had this before us and we've discussed this at council before, but we never really made a decision on it, is our Platts. You know, I just think it's time. I'm, I keep looking at them thinking they're fading away. We need to, we've had the museum director here. They're willing to take it, preserve it. We can have copies made, that'll look great. I think we need to make a decision. And I don't know if we want to put it on the agenda.
I, it's fine. We've done it before. One thing I will say, one, one, based off of the last conversations, I know there was some concern about sending it to the, to the Stark Society because it is really then us giving up our kind of ownership in it. You know, one of the things that we've looked at, and that was part of the facility study, and this wasn't in that study, but staff did, was look at more of a secure storage vault here at the city.
Because we have other things that.
Because there's, yeah, there's going to be other things. Because there's, yeah, there's going to be other things outside of this that, you know, and I think we maybe even got some minor prices, and so, you know, if you want me to put on a future agenda, that's fine. I guess I would ask the council to potentially think about that. You know, if we're looking at preserving something, is that we have more documents than just this that we're going to have to do that to, you know, and is an option investing in something like a vault within the city to really, because we don't really have a place that protects it from fire, water, and there, you know, and there's things that we've looked at, knowing that this would potentially come up again.
We have the space for a vault that.
And I think there's some options in some of our back rooms to, and that's where I think depending on how big we want to look at would give us, I mean, I'd say we even got some room right behind us here, so do something.
I like that part of it, just because there are other needs too, but fully agree with what you're saying, Mary, it's time that we do something to protect them, and we can still make nice copies and.
And I think for us to, you know, if we were to actually have somebody professionally do those, it would cost us thousands of dollars. I mean, that's just what it is. But we need to preserve what we have before it's gone.
I can put something together for the council to consider.
Kind of along that line, you know, I went down to the Historical Society last year because I know, or I'd found in earlier times down there that a copy of the original articles of agreement, not complete, it's got a five, four pages, and then when it starts adding the additional items to it, it's like there's another page that isn't there. It's got like setting aside the land for the parks and stuff like that. Fortunately, it doesn't, something like women having equal rights talked about, and but I did have high-resolution copies made, and I forwarded those to Matt, and it'd be nice to get them mounted and shown as well. Again, that's the original document, so it might be an opportunity for that, too.
That's it, thank you.
Steve?
Well, you know, being new, what do you got? I guess the thing that, one of the things is John talked about the ice and the snow on the sidewalks, and I know on Second Avenue, when that was really soft, and they could really go like a bad out of, you know, what, they threw, I mean, slush was thrown clean up over the sidewalks and on the lawns. Those are really tough to clean up. That stuff had to be six, eight inches thick on top of the sidewalk, and it froze as hard as a rock, and it was terrible to walk over, granted, but it was, I don't know how they would even start to clean that up as an individual. Hopefully, they've cleaned up some since then, and I haven't been on them, but other than that, thanks for welcoming me to the City Council of Hutchinson, and appreciate it, so I'm, see what I can do to be assistance to the city and hopefully do some, make some good decisions. Thank you.
Steve?
Just two things, one, somebody suggested this idea to me with the Main Street project being done, Kent, but with more and more electric vehicles coming in, would there be a need or an opportunity to add some wiring in the system for charging stations somewhere? And I guess when I thought about it, I thought, well, maybe there could be a couple at, like on Library Square on Washington and also First Avenue South, because they have the pull-in parking, and it's downtown business district, and maybe somebody goes to have a bite to eat while their vehicle's charging, but, but again, is this an opportunity to lay some of that infrastructure in as part of the project, not knowing what's involved?
Oh, very well, could be, that's a topic, we've talked with utility staff over the last few, it's been a while now, we talked in some detail a couple of years ago, Volkswagen, after their shenanigans, I guess, you know, had to donate millions and millions, not billions of dollars, I don't know what it was, and basically, they were funding charging stations across the country, and that was just starting to take shape when we talked to utility staff about that concept. Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I will say, they did apply for that, and, you know, I believe they were successful, obviously.
Not saying actually do the charging stations now, but if there's some.
Get the wires in the ground, basically, yeah. No, I'll talk to, we'll talk to utilities about that, you know, there's, yeah, the main line electrical is in the back in the alleys, so we'd have to bring, like you said, maybe we could identify locations on some side streets and bring it from the alleys. Really, the only electrical conduits up front along Main Street are to power the streetlights, so that's, you know, relatively small feeder, all in all.
Is that feeder big enough to do the charging stations, or is it a big enough feeder to?
I don't believe so, it'd have to come from the alleys, the transformers and the likes in the alleys, but I'll talk to utility staff, and yeah, give that some thought, it's not a bad idea, actually.
Yeah, that's another way to get on the map.
Yep.
Have you heard, kind of, municipality's been putting in charging stations?
No, I'm surprised, like, yeah, I hadn't heard anything, like Matt, it sounded like they were going to apply, I mean, that, there's a lot of money there, you know, you read the paper, you hear about them on the coasts, obviously, you know, being readily available. I, maybe you guys have seen one, I have yet to see one.
Just had pottery studios in the area.
I know there was something that came out maybe a year or two, I believe Rochester was looking at it, I don't know if that was municipally driven, you know, this is, you know, this is for discussion, is this the city's role, or is this Hutch Utilities' role?
Partnership.
Or, yeah, exactly, I mean, I think, because that's, you know, I know utilities have gone down that route, there's some utilities that have gone down the route, because I think there's obviously potentially some money to make, and there are some private investments made by, I haven't seen a whole lot, I'm not saying that it hasn't, I just haven't seen a whole lot of cities getting into it, but like I said, I know, I know there's something came out in Rochester, I just don't remember if that was municipally driven or if that was.
I don't, you know, what is the class, I don't know.
I know Duluth.
Norman, would you know by chance?
Well, we put in three for about five grand, but the equipment was all donated. But I will say, all the way on the 94 corridor to Duluth, they're putting them in at every rest stop, and I bet that's, those are press stations, probably, state, and I got that information from the Cloud Co-op. They've been looking at that, so they might have some expertise for you.
I know they had a charging station up at the Railroad Museum up in Duluth, there was a charging station in that one parking area, that's the only one I've seen.
But that's high tourist area, too.
That's what makes downtown, you know, they typically had a site where somebody's going to spend some time, just a little looking in. A lunch or dinner, so there's some shopping, so we want to attract people downtown, it's just another way to do it. We had to check into, the other thing I had, kind of along the Platts, but that whole, yeah, trying to preserve EDN Depot at, I don't recall where that. It's kind of possibly a grant.
Yeah, I don't know if any of those are involved with on the history side of.
Well, we heard nothing.
Because we had kind of gave the blessing, and that was the last, I'd kind of heard of it, so.
I was looking at some stuff, and I came across that, and I was like, oh, yeah.
Very good question for the new director at the museum, might have got lost in the shuffle with the new director.
That's all, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Chad?
I have nothing left.
Nothing?
Nothing.
New Platts, though.
No, 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 it's an old one.
Mr. Yannick?
Couple of things, city offices will be closed January 21st for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. I believe amongst, there's four of you that are going to either the newly-elected officials' conference or the experienced officials' conference February 1st and 2nd, and I'm, hopefully Melissa, I think has reached out to all of you regarding hotels, or at least you should be looking for confirmations if you haven't received that yet. Then, there are two other conferences that are coming up, if you have any interest, both of them are legislative-related. The League is having their Legislative Day at the Capitol, that's February 20th and 21st, and then the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has their Legislative Action Day, Wednesday, January 30th. So those are two items that are out there.
Matt, what was that other one?
The League of Minnesota Cities is February 20th and the 21st, and then the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is January 30th. Those are usually pretty good events where they'll, they'll kind of talk about maybe some of the legislative priorities for both of those groups, they maybe even have a speaker or two come in from the legislative, and then there's usually an opportunity where, and most of the senators and representatives know that cities are coming, but there's potentially opportunities for you to go and meet either our local representatives or speak with anybody else who may have some sort of interest in something that's, that we're involved with, so.
As a coalition.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Coalition Governor has been invited to.
Invited to speak, yeah, and I know I've been to a couple of them, and we've had, yeah, anyone, you know, the one I was at, the last one I was at, I think Governor Dayton spoke, but we've had both, you know, Leader of the House and the Senate have also spoken in the past, so it's a good opportunity to connect with legislatures, but if it's something you're interested in attending, just let me know. That's it for me.
Well, believe it or not, I got a few things. Ooh. Yeah. Got approached by a few of the doctor's offices in town, asking about if they could get handicap parking, more handicap parking, like right in front of their, you know, there was one down from, now, one was down from the Dairy Queen, down on the other end, in front of the old, old Dr. Keel's office.
Oh, yes, yes. Got a doctor, yeah.
Yeah, there, and in front of Dr. Mock's office, where, because of what they, you know, when they have handicap patients, they say that's, you know, the handicap parking's way down on the other end, down on Main Street, I think on both those blocks, if.
Is there a parking lot right at that one office?
House of Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right next to it.
Not even the city one, but right next to it.
Yeah, he does have a private parking lot right next there, but, yeah, that he don't utilize, but I realize that.
Yeah, I would just say, and I think I mentioned this before in the past, due to the sensitivity of these requests and just having a little bit of a paper trail, it'd be nice if they made those requests in writing to the city, and then we can respond accordingly, so we know exactly where they're coming from and what their desires are.
Good enough.
Yeah, so it'd be, you know, I mean, it just develops a paper trail that really, it gives staff, you know, I think, clearer direction from the beginning, who the contact person is and who's initiating, because we've talked a lot about this issue in the past, having basically, you know, parking and designated for specific businesses or entities within the public right of way, so it's a sensitive topic from a.
Me and Matt talk about paper trails all the time.
No, I would appreciate that, we're more than willing, John and I are more than willing to look at it and dig into it and respond accordingly, but it'd be nice if it was in writing.
I'll relate that back to them. The other thing, John Block is up for the EDA Board, so if that's all right, we'll reappoint him next meeting, so that'll be on the agenda. The other, I know this was brought up before, but just being at a hockey game the other night, and is there a possibility of getting more lights out at the rec center? In the parking lot area? I know that, we talked about that before.
Committees talked about it, I think, and thinking back to Delph's response, they're going to have to redo their parking lot at some point in the future, and I think the thought is, why invest in lights within the parking area when you know that lot's going to be addressed and potentially reconfigured, and I would hope it would be better delineated a little bit, so it's not such a free-for-all through there, you know, but, but at the very least, then you could, I think, strategically look at where you want to put lights when that's redone.
Yeah, and I, to piggyback on it, that has been the conversation, because within the next five years, within our CAP, there is a plan to repave that parking lot, that's the most logical time to do it. I know they've tried to do some.
Some additional ones.
Some additional lighting on the outsides of the buildings. But, yeah, I know there's been a discussion that to look at that when that's being done.
Last thing I had is, I know the, I'd like to have staff look at the leash law, because I'd like to have electronic devices added to it to be able to control your pet, because I, I know it says that pets have to be on a leash, but it also says that they have to be in control of the animal, which I know that when you see some 10-year-old walking a great big German shepherd, I know that they wouldn't be able to control that animal, and I know you can control them with the shock collar, so this, if staff could look at that to see what their communities do.
So with the idea of being outside of private property on public property without a leash, as long as it's controlled by some sort of electronic device?
Yep.
Distance requirement, just trying to think how.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it again, you know, we've gone back and forth over the years, I think when I first got here was, it had to be leashed or under the control of a responsible person. What I'm hearing the mayor say is, you'd want it leashed and?
Right now, the ordinance says that it needs to be leashed and in control.
Right, I know, I know that's what it is now, but.
I think the idea is leashed or electronically controlled.
One or the other.
Okay. Yeah, we can sure look at that for you.
All righty, with that, that's all I had.
Aha, move to adjourn.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you.